To the flag of the United States of America. And to the covenant for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Remember to turn your phones on silent, please. Uh, any additions, deletions to the agenda?
I'm cheering, you know?
All right, then I would consider a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes? Anything from the extended amount of visitors this evening? All right.
They're all online.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
On the summer.
We need interactive that way. Or. Uh, consider their consent agenda, we have the May sixteenth school board minutes. The monthly cash flow, including investments, the monthly bills paid, the monthly bills paid to activities accounts, uh, the donations. From which we got laptops to the school and the personnel summary sheet. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, special board reports with possible action. Personnel, we're gonna start with personnel, we did have a meeting. On May twenty-fourth, we met. Right here, I can wrap my paper. Uh, we met to review and discuss the bus contract. We go in an order of this, the agenda, or the agenda for the personnel meeting?
You can do however you want to, you wanna do the, what you wanna report on, and then you can go off the actions and however you wanna do.
Uh, we reviewed and discussed the bus quotes, which since then, I believe we've come to, um, have a contract solidified with them, and we will be discussing that in a few minutes. Uh, we got an update on the Schedule C negotiations, and I believe we came up with an agreement on that. And we had a discussion on, um, our Penn Mac employees, uh, having longevity pay discussion. And giving them a end of the year longevity payment. And then we also discussed the superintendent's, um, review that we are doing, and we have, um, met and discussed the results of that, and I've already talked to Mike about setting up a personnel meeting to go over the results with him, so he'll be getting back to us with a few meeting dates and to see what worked. Uh, then we had a closed section of the meeting, and then to discuss some personnel, uh, disciplinary action. So, from there, we can go back and do the approvals and actions on the meeting. So, let's start with according to the agenda, the longevity pay for the Penn Mac contract. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any questions, comments, or concerns? You guys know what that's?
Yes.
We discussed it in budget meeting too, so.
Okay, everybody?
We were, yeah, I know that it comes out of ESR dollars initially, and then we'll have ongoing fees.
That you're gonna try to put it in the general. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Then all those in favor of the longevity payment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Motion approved. Uh, approved the Schedule C contract with the Education Minnesota, and I would like a motion to approve that, I guess that is kind of my opinion, so, uh, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the Schedule C contract? Nope, okay.
Looks good.
Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Next would be approve the last chance agreement for the discussed personnel disciplinary action. I'll make a motion to approve the last chance agreement, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion with the reminders that no names can be used? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Opposed, so, passes. Uh, update on the bus contract negotiations.
Yeah, we, uh, have a tentative, uh, agreement, uh, with the last counterproposal from, uh, Fornshells. Two remaining sticking point, I guess, things that we had to settle were with the fuel surcharge and the, um, agreement with the payment for the PAX students. Um, and we, I think, have a tentative agreement with those two areas, with the surcharge on fuel. And, uh, we went to a percentage on the, on the amount of MDE. Dollar amount that we received from both students. Um, only piece I gotta run by, uh, Missy, cause Missy was out on vacation last week, is I don't know when, uh, I have not quite, uh, figured out when that, uh, announcement is final. The thing that we agreed to with Eric was that we would get billed on that on June, and I'm not sure if that is actually when that is final or not, from MDEs.
Supposed to be by July first.
Yeah, so, that's the case, we should be fine, but, um, so, that's where we're at. Well, and I'm in the process of doing the contract, and I'll have our attorney just review any, anything for language issues that, just pieces of that, just make sure we steps that I don't do something wrong in the language, or write something wrong with the contract, so, then we'll have Eric review it and go from there.
I guess I'll add, just cause we discussed it at budget committee too, so, since we'll talk about it now, just that it was a significant increase in that contract to get it to fair market value, which we were in agreement with, but the significant increase hits the budget, and we possibly will have to make some budget changes because of that. So, just part of balancing the budget.
Yep, which is understandable, I think everybody's feeling that balancing of the budgets in their personal lives, everything. Everything costs more right now.
Yeah, and I, I used to share the same concern, which is just, it's a huge increase, largest increase we've had in that line item. It all comes, we aren't getting our state aid, so we, it's, it's hard budget hard. I think it's a fair contract, but it may end up, or not next year, with the following year, we might have to let teachers go or something, depending on how the project, how enrollment goes.
Well, enrollment's changed anyway, the teachers' situation is also a thing to look at, but I don't think we have to jump right to that if we have because of, and blame that on the bus contract, I think there's other things that all work together. Would be my.
Well, there's also what state gives you revenue, there's lots of, lots of things that come into play.
Uh, and that's, that's my point, is not just. I don't, I don't wanna put to the public that we're cutting teachers because of the bus contract, cause that's not true.
It's just such a big increase.
It is, but, so was my fill on my gas tank today.
I think, uh,
So.
I think the only other one that was that big was insurance, which we don't know for sure.
Yep, that's coming next month.
I think everybody else got it. Uh, I think that's coming, we're gonna talk about that with Missy's. In your packet of information, I think we're gonna talk about tonight for insurance.
Well, yeah, we have a tentative agreement.
Yeah, so tentative agreement, and it might be on July's board meeting.
Yes.
Nope.
Yep. All right, um, curriculum.
Hey, I have. We didn't meet, right. Uh, so I handed out a, a report to everybody, there's kind of four areas, there's just been talked about this month. The first one, update on summer school, uh, so summer school started June sixth, it has been very smooth going. We had a hundred and forty-eight, forty-nine students, and we've actually increased students as summer school has gone on, so we got a hundred and fifty-two students registered in grades K through eight.
Awesome.
Um, so, kind of looking at that, as we kind of round the end of summer school, which will be this Thursday, it'll be the end of that third week. Uh, we'll do a survey, I'm developing a survey to send out to families that participated.
Here next week.
This week, alright.
This is the third week since last week.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Summer, half over.
I've got another week in bringers, that's why I.
Depending on when they started, yep. So, we have, so we'll develop a survey, I did a survey that, uh, we brought to teachers, uh, Wednesday in kind of the closeout. And then also asked them what worked, what didn't work, gained some feedback from them, we'll do a similar thing with parents. Potential there with ESR is that maybe we can do something similar this next year before ESR runs out. Um, the second one, the district leadership team met at the end of the year, and so the district leadership team of parents and teachers and administrators and students, uh, got together, we primarily focused on data, and so we looked at, uh, MC data, and we looked at STAR data, and the goal or the focus was to start the dive, there we got for about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. To start that in terms of what anomalies do you see, what questions do you ask, what would you want to know more in order to go further? Um, that information will go to the admin team, and they'll look at both the retreat that's happening this week, but also the admin meetings that we have over the summer. Uh, that'll help develop goals beginning, uh, for August, when we all pull back together. Um, number three is our teacher mentor program, uh, the mentor program is set to begin in the fall. We had eighteen teachers that filled out the survey and wanting to be a mentor to new teacher, we have eight new staff members coming on, at least as a break down, eight new staff members. Um, and so, we will look, uh, both with the administrators and the staff that are on the chair to match that person up, the new teacher with the mentor, um, for this next year. And then the, the fourth one is our personalized learning plans, we have all of our seniors, we had a hundred percent of them complete a personalized learning plan, we lead the career counselor. Um, and then most of our juniors as well, with the exception of a couple, and so they'll, we'll try to reach for this couple over the next year, they were both CLC students, and so they weren't on split us. Uh, they're, so they were, we were trying to reach out to them many times.
Is that something that goes to parents at all?
The PLP?
Yeah.
It doesn't right now, it is just mainly a process that the kids go through, uh, the parents could certainly get a copy anytime. Um, one of the things moving forward though, our freshman academy class, that is where that PLP will actually finalize, right, or, or come to kind of fruition.
I was gonna say, I hope it's not finalized as a.
It's not final, right, but a plan is developed in terms of in time for them to use it, right? And so we're really trying to make that shift from it being a senior thing to really being a freshman thing. And so, at the time that they do a media and have it within the middle school, we'll feed into that, and then they have it during that freshman year, which will help guide what are the courses that they're gonna take, what are the pathways that they're looking for, so really move or shift it to where it should be. Um, so, next year, all of our ninth graders will go to the freshman academy, and they will come out with a PLP. So, in that transition, we have tenth grade that we just need to make sure that we get to all the tenth graders next year, and then at that point, the pipeline is moving.
So, the seniors that aren't planning their high school, they're planning for after high school on their personalized learning plan?
So, the.
Like the seniors completed theirs?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was really focused on the next step beyond high school, and that PLP, when we really look at the development of it, we want it to be part of what classes are you taking? Within high school, which then lead you to post-secondary, which might be an apprenticeship, it might be, uh, a one-year program, a two-year program, maybe a four-year program. But, those things that, that lead to that, it becomes more of an ongoing discussion.
Can, can I caution you on one thing?
Yeah.
That they can deviate from that?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
I had a child on the college track and was told he couldn't take welding, it took four meetings because that's not on the college track. So, but he still wanted to take welding, he didn't care, he wanted to weld.
When we talk about that personalized learning plan, it really is, especially in high school, it is not written still, right? It is very much a in-progress piece, but it's to help them guide, what are some of the classes I would take? What am I taking, what am I interested in? And it's gonna deviate, right, I'm gonna get to sophomore year and make a difference.
I can't remember how many years back this goes, like, is this the first year, so those seniors were just doing it, or they did it?
Some of those seniors haven't touched on before, but in terms of one of the goals that we did is we wanna make sure that a hundred percent of them got through that plan.
One, one of the goals that the personnel committee set up for Mike and the rest of, to filter down, was that every kid has a PLP in high school.
And then if a kid's just going to the workforce, they're just writing, I'm gonna go work.
And that's part of a PLP, absolutely, for some kids, that is their direction, that's what their, their plan is.
But that means they take more of the industrial technology.
More CTE type courses, career technical ed, um, you know, like, in terms of a goal for high school programming, it's keep every door open, right?
Cabinet. Yes.
And so, if, they still might be taking some of those higher level classes, like, that might be a CIS course, but they really have a plan that they wanna enter the workforce right on high school. And so, what we wanna do is, how do we help them get there?
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Ryan?
I'm just gonna jump in and take one of my items off my report.
Since right after anybody has any questions for Ryan.
No.
Alright, how you?
I'm just gonna pee back off of Ryan's report, but I'd say, you know, I, I just wanna thank all of our staff and admin for planning of the, of the summer school and all the camps.
It was awesome, my kids.
Yeah, they, um, it was a lot of planning and a lot of work to kind of coordinate all that, and, and putting our heads together from, from all the principals to to Ryan and, and Matt and the activities department, and putting, I mean, putting those whole things together to making it all-day event for kids, to getting the kids here for not only a half-day of summer school, but then making it different camps and having kids having all those different options. Uh, from, from sports to, from gymnastics to swim camp to thrones, to steam camp, to art camp, and I, I was in the children's initiative meeting, and uh, our commissioner Neil was in the meeting, and he had some people that he'd met somewhere at his meeting, and they were talking about this summer camp that they were, their kids were a part of, and their kids were just going off and on about all the things that they were doing in summer, they, they didn't even realize that they were in summer school, I think, because they were doing all these other things, you know? So, um, just, I wanna just, and, and Ryan was a big part of that, so I just wanna, and, and then to get all the teachers and, and everybody involved and to do that, it's, uh, three weeks of a lot of hard work, and it started way back, you know, six months ago when we started.
Yeah, you can't start it on the last day of school.
So, it was a lot of work, and then the transportation part of it, and the coordination of all that, and so, you know, hopefully we, we'll do it one more year, and then somehow if we can keep it going somehow, I, I don't know how, but we'll see, cause it's, you know, a lot of the ESR dollars was available to do that, but, um, kinda cool, so I wanna give them hats off to all their work and plan for that.
Awesome. Beautiful. Alright, thank you. Policy.
So, second reading of policy six fourteen. Um, school district testing plan and procedure, the form accompanying model policy six fourteen, the school district test plan and procedure has been deleted. The deletion coincides with the revision to model policy six fourteen, in which replace references to the form with a link um, to the person's access website where the forms can be found. And then, six fourteen, on mandated reporting child neglect, the form has just been moved to the website.
And the form is updated.
It's updated and on the website.
Just a reminder that we're all on that committee, so we all get to read them.
Like, I didn't see any reds, I saw the form from mandated reporting, I saw the policy, oh, I'm like, it's on the website. Was it a comma? It's just, yes.
Sometimes it's like, you change the, uh, the link.
Are we gonna move forward with the website?
Our website?
Okay. Yes.
Yep, starts June twenty-seventh, that's in my, throwing my thunder.
I thought it was. I was like, on the website, like, where's?
Actually, that's not our, I don't think it's our website, it's, uh, is it an MDE website?
This one is, I think. But we like to open our policies.
Yeah, yeah, but it's actually on the MDE's website, this one is.
All right, activities, we did not meet, but it appears we need to, um, approve the SHSL membership renewal for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which is something we do every year, so I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else from Mike and Mike?
No, just a couple, uh, just remember there are some things that we'll have to sign after this, so, this one, and then pick, uh, a couple things, yeah, so, don't run out of here, you gotta sign some things, clerk and stuff.
Facilities. Uh, we did not meet, but I'm sure Mike has.
Yeah, just a quick update, um, we're, uh, supposed to be in phase two of the athletic complex right now, we, uh, which was, um, some of the bleacher footings and stuff are supposed to be.
The bleachers are gone, then?
Yep, they're gone, um, we're having a little issue with the state approving, um, some permits, so we're hopefully gonna find that out tomorrow. Or Tu- yeah, Tuesday or Wednesday. I'm crossing my fingers, um, so we'll see where we're at with that, but, um.
What kind of permits for?
Um, it's a, it's a long story, I don't know exactly, something with the stadium gentleman, um, the state got a little, little more complex with some permit type stuff, um, Woold had a call in with them on Friday, and they're, they need to approve some different plans. And, um, the gentleman who from the state was out on Friday, they were gonna try to check back, back today with him, and they need to get, uh, I, I'm not sure, Anderson Brothers and Woold are working through that with the state they've got. So, um, if that's the case, we should be fine, and everything will be.
It's up in shady by August.
Um, if, if that, if the permits get delayed, we might be a little bit delayed on the project, so, I will know more on Wednesday, so, it's not.
Do they just figure out the, the poles where we're pulling anyways, right?
Right.
Cause they're still up.
Yep, yep, that's just timing of when they do everything else, but, so it's got something to do with approval of the footings and tying into some project that's above me or something.
But how did, how did we miss, how did Woold miss that?
Woold didn't miss it, it's the stadium guy that missed it. Or.
That's where I'm not, I'm not.
No, yeah, according to Robert and Anderson Brothers in my phone conversation with them on Friday, um, cause I was in contact with the stadium guy the other day. Um, I don't know if you wanna go into this right here, but, um, he said nothing to me about it, and then all of a sudden, Anderson Brothers was in contact with him, and he said something about it, and, and Woold had no idea that there was an issue, and, cause I was in contact with the stadium gentleman, and he said, well, why didn't you say something to the superintendent that you were having an issue, because we know nothing about it, so. Um, and they, and they got some other timeframes of three other projects with the same timeframe bars, and they're not having any of the issue. So, the stadium guy missed the deadline. So, anyway, so, they're trying to pull some strings at the state, to see if the state will sign off on it for us because of the timeframe. So. Anyway, that's where we're at, but, so hopefully we get on track back here on Wednesday.
Anything else from facilities? Budget.
Budget, we met on June second, and we've discussed some of the things that we discussed at that meeting, the bus quote, which we've covered now, and the Penn Mac longevity contract, which we've covered now. Um, on here, I'm gonna jump to, I don't have to go in order, so I'm gonna do lunch and milk prices, lunch fees for twenty-two, twenty-three, this is an action item. We didn't, they normally use a price calculator to figure out what lunch and milk fee should be, but we didn't have data to use this calculator, so we didn't have to do that, and we are proposing to stay the same. Same fees.
The federal isn't making us go up this year?
No, because the data, we don't have any data to do it.
No data, it's what they're not targeting anybody.
Well.
They have in the last two years, so.
So, no preschool, lunch, and breakfast free?
Correct, as of now, no free lunch or breakfast.
Lunch and breakfast are.
And how much is it gonna be?
Um, student lunch is three dollars and five cents, student breakfast, a dollar seventy-five, milk, fifty cents.
You mean no breakfast free?
Adult rates, if you wanted to know, lunch is four twenty-five, and adult breakfast, three dollars.
So, the student breakfast is more than the adult breakfast?
Student breakfast is a dollar seventy-five.
Or, I'm sorry, okay, I was thinking the three oh five, and that was a little, okay, sorry.
So, I would make a motion to approve keeping our lunch and breakfast and milk prices the same.
I'll second. Now we can have a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right, you have a tendency to jump ahead.
I'm duggling with that one a lot.
I was thinking we'd be out here by six thirty.
I know, I want the whole thing, I wanna part of it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Keep in mind that breakfast might still be free.
Just depends what happens.
I don't worry. I were paying three bucks the last time I was paying lunch. I thought it was two something. Last two years ago when I paid for lunch, two ninety-five.
Yeah, it's two ninety-five, it was two ninety-five.
Now it's three oh five, so we.
Well, last time it was three oh five. Adult, oh, and kids.
Yep. Aw, look, back in my account. I remember paying three oh five, but.
But you paid two ninety-five. Ten cent. Hundred, it's ten cents.
I'm sure.
Yeah, but that, a price change would be, that would be a price change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, then we talked about driver's ed fees. Now you get me out of order, should I just make a motion, and then we talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the twenty-two, twenty-three behind-the-wheel fees and classroom fees.
I'll second.
Okay.
And what are the new behind-the-wheel fees?
It is.
And when do they go into effect, do I still have time to write a charter?
If you're, the next thing you sign up for probably will be increased. So, classroom, instead of sixty dollars, will be one hundred dollars, behind the wheel, instead of two hundred and sixty dollars, will now be two hundred and eighty dollars. And this is to help cover the costs, number one is gas, insurance, car maintenance and replacement, small amount in, what?
How many kids on average do we have to do that, I mean, whatever?
Field.
We have, uh.
Is it like, um, there's a cap on how many kids can do it in June, and then do it in August?
Yeah, but over a year, there's usually over a hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and just for, you know, what, every, the schools around us, they were all paying about a, they were all at a hundred for the class, we were sixty, so we were, we were quite a bit lower in the class. We're on line with everybody else.
Yeah, actually, nobody was.
And there's not a lot of places to take them anymore, it's not like you can go to the Brainerd Driving School, like, you don't feel like they ever have it.
So, we were quite a bit lower than everybody else.
Any other questions, comments?
So, those, those would start next school year, so, on July first.
I'm still paid today.
Yeah.
I have the form in my.
So, it would be next year's class, and next year's driving fees.
Yes.
So, for the next school year, so.
Way to get that in before Brian's kid takes.
He's got lots of money.
Yeah, right.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor of the new behind-the-wheel and classroom fees?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes?
Um, before we get to the budget, we also discussed rental fee for family center, and this is in the works and being discussed and figuring out all the finalities of it, I guess.
Nuances.
Yeah, the nuances of it, yeah, so, working on it, it's just not ready to present and.
Their, their rent is gonna go up a little bit.
Yep.
Um, but they are gonna do, uh, they're gonna rent one less room, um, they don't need, they're having trouble staffing one of the rooms, um, but, um, we also could use the one room, so it was kind of a mutual thing. Um, the other piece of it is that they're gonna take some of those kids that were in one of the programs and combine them in the other two rooms. Um, so our special ed students that are in the fund stop program will be serviced in the forty-year-olds. So, we, we, we're working through all those in the, all those pieces to it, but the rent will go up for those two rooms a little bit due to costs of janitorial services, rent of, of facilities, of electricity, all that stuff, but it's in the works.
Which hits the budget.
You know?
Nope. Okay, so now we're gonna talk about the budget, and Missy's gonna do presentation on our packet that we have. Well, then, no, she should start first.
Yeah. I would share it first.
I do?
And then you can make.
Yeah, and I'm. It's all on order tonight, it all goes wrong.
No, it's not blowing right, it's taking me back.
I feel like we share it first.
I would share it, then make a motion, and then discuss it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
So I can answer a question about it.
All right.
Which might be why we would want to. I see your point now, okay.
Good point.
So no questions during?
Well.
If you do, just make a motion.
All right, the first couple pages are just overview items, so if you skip to page, what would be paid for? The highlights of the official twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, at the top, general fund savings, so we, I mean, we're projecting a two percent what it's, the state has assigned a two percent increase for gen ed revenue. Uh, we have adjusted our pupil units, our adjusted pupil units to thirteen sixty-four, which is pretty much where we closed last year with a little bit of room, um, just because we have smaller classes graduating, bigger classes coming in, so we have a little bit of work on them there. So it's adjusted at thirteen sixty-four, but knowing that sometimes we start a little higher, we lose some in the middle, so we get a lot of ups and lows, but thirteen sixty-four is a pretty conservative, conservative number. Um, cost increases, estimated health insurance increase would be nine and a half percent, which last year we went out for the hit a bit, so we, in that contract, we have a maximum of nine and a half percent, so that's what I budgeted, I budgeted on the high end. I don't know, I'm waiting, this month I should get numbers on where we should land, so they're working on that right now. They, as in National Insurance Services, which helps us out with our contracts with the insurance company. So hopefully that will come in a little lower, but we'll have to wait and see.
For every, remember, Missy, for every one percent, do you remember what that kind of came out to?
I don't remember.
Was it, was it like a hundred thousand?
That's the number I have in my head, but I can't be sure.
Was it a hundred and fifty thousand for every one percent?
It's about, it's one percent of our total revenue.
Yeah, I thought that was, okay, just curious.
Um, and then the next item, teacher salary rollups, their, per their contract, it's a two point two five for this next school year. So that's all factored into the budget. Um, unassigned fund balance, so actual numbers for last school year are sixteen point seven, that's where our fund balance was at the end of last school year. Um, now you'll kind of notice, we're kind of in an in-between stage, so the next one is projected for next year, it says nothing about this current year, because we're in between, we're just finishing, we don't know where we're gonna end here, and then I'll have actual numbers, hopefully at the first revision that we can pluck in there. Um, but as of right now, just going based on what we were estimating for twenty-one, twenty-two, and what we're projecting for twenty-two, twenty-three, that would land us about ten point two eight percent fund balance at the end of next year. Now, we're anticipating a one point one two deficit, but with that said, there's the athletic complex, which we are taking out of LTFM and operating capital of the one point one six. So if you look at it that way, you were about forty thousand cubic. Any questions so far? All right, so the next page just goes over the rest of the funds besides the general fund that we just talked about. Um, food service, we kind of kept it the same, breakfast and lunch, what were we charging this year? So revenues and expenditures, we kind of kept the same as what we were doing before. Uh, community ed, there was a small change to the expenditures due, due to salary changes. And then building construction fund, the twenty-two, twenty-three projects are wrapping up, so hopefully we can get those finished really soon.
Can we talk, can I say something on that, or do I have to wait?
I'm making notes, and then I'm gonna go back through my book.
I'll do that, too.
All right. Um, the next page for general fund revenue, this is just a breakdown of your revenue sources. So it gives you an idea of how much is from local levy, how much is from state aid, how much is from federal aids, and then you have the total revenue at the bottom, and then you have the graph that kind of gives you a breakdown. Next page is general fund expenditures, so this is by program. Now, the graph also will just give you an idea of how, how the money, how the expenses are spent. Gives you an idea of administration versus district versus elementary and secondary instruction, vocational, special ed, instructional support, pupil support, the sites and buildings. The sites and buildings, of course, is gonna be up higher this year because they'll be athletic complex, and then any other fixed costs. All right, and the next page is split out by the object code, so it's split a little bit differently, so this will kind of give you a better breakdown of salaries and employee benefits, then the purchase services, and supplies, materials, and the capital expenditures, and then there's a little bit of other expenses in there. So, also on the graph, so I kind of combined salaries and benefits together on the graph, and then you have the purchase services, supplies, materials, and the capital expenditures. All right, and then we move on to food service, so again, like I said, we kept food service the same. Um, kind of hard to gauge revenue when you, when it's been off for two years. So we kind of stayed the same as what we previously were pre-COVID. That should keep us close to the same ballpark. And then food service fund expenditures, again, it's broken down by salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, and capital expenditures, and then other expense. Next one is community service, with the community ed budget, so same thing, this is the revenue, local revenues versus the state aids. And then the expenditures, again, the expenditures went up a little bit due to salary rollups, but other than that, everything else pretty much stayed the same. And there's just a little synopsis on the back, but nothing has really changed them. So.
Can I get a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? I'll start. Uh, for, as far as the health insurance, uh, we're locked in for a two-year, I assume.
Yep, it's a two-year, so last year was our first, this past year.
And then we, we had in there that we couldn't go up more than nine point five. When, do we go up for bid again this year, and then?
It'll be next spring.
Or next spring, and then lock in for another two years, depending on who you will.
Yep.
Okay, it's, I know Pete's went up twenty-four percent for some.
For some, some others were one.
Most.
Yeah, someone one.
Some who had people could, some who had people wouldn't even get bids, nobody would bid them.
Yup.
For health insurance?
Yeah, uh, the public health consortium through the state that they encourage most schools to go to, then raised them twenty-four to thirty-six percent, so I was curious. I'm glad we worked with them.
No, we're not.
I have a comment on the unassigned fund balance, the sixteen point seven seems a little high to me, so I'm very much happier with the twenty-two, twenty-three number. And my only other one was. Yeah, did we get, um, approved for spending our excess food service money on breakfast, or whatever we decided to, or where we began?
I'm glad you asked that, so I emailed them before one vacation, 'cause I hadn't heard anything, and she emailed back and said, "We don't really give a formal approval."
Okay.
Um, but she's like, "As long as, for the breakfast piece, it's basically, we just have to have a way to track how many we're serving, so long as we can track that."
Which we do.
So we could, so.
So we'll spend down our.
Without an approval, with.
Right.
Exactly.
So we'll charge it, but the kids don't have to pay.
Yes, right.
So, so technically, we are charging.
Charging it.
But we're charging it to us, yeah. So we'll, we'll send something out in, uh, in the newsletter and stuff to the families and all that, the district will be providing, providing breakfast.
Beautiful.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, from anybody?
Nope.
Steve?
Um, the only question I had was the, on the community service fund. Looks like the revenue is thirty thousand above expenditures. We plan to make money on community ed?
Well, now we have to remember that school readiness falls in our community ed, that's per MBE, so school readiness actually kind of helps carry the community ed program itself. So, because we're tuition-based for school readiness, that fund balance is higher than, than the expenditures, so.
What is school readiness, twenty-nine hundred? Twenty-eight hundred?
No, I think it's.
Three or threes. Is that what you mentioned?
No.
Twenty-three something, is it, twenty-three hundred?
That was twenty-eight. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know.
I'd have to think.
I have to.
I didn't find out, my needs.
I know the monthly amount, and, oh, do you have to calculate it? Four sixty-one twelve is the monthly amount, and they would pay that for the nine months.
Four sixty-one twelve.
That's the monthly.
Forty-one fifty. But if they pay it all at.
That's not right.
That's not right.
You got the wrong number.
If they pay it all at once, it's cheaper.
Correct, there is a discount.
So it might be that if you pay it monthly. But if you pay it in one lump sum, I know it'd be like a six or seven hundred dollar discount. So, which would put it down in the three.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, then I.
Let's work it for the next one.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of approving the budget as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or passes?
Um, next thing, I guess, that we didn't discuss, but Missy's gonna discuss, uh, business manager report about increasing the credit limit. So we have our school credit card, um, we had a little snag this month with, we, with all the items that we've been purchasing for summer school, and then we have teams that went to state, um, because all of it's happening at one time, and there was a timing issue with when the payment got posted to when charges were being made, so I'm proposing to increase our credit card limit an additional ten, well, it could be five thousand or ten thousand, but I think it just says ten thousand.
I have a question also, and I'd like it before we do a motion, because we might have to adjust. We'd have to adjust the motion, so how do we work that?
Have to adjust the motion.
Okay, so first off.
Our, our current credit limit is.
Twenty thousand, so we'll increase it ten thousand to thirty thousand, so that we won't have those pickups. It wouldn't, I mean, this is the only time of the year that it's happened, for, I mean, it hasn't happened at all the rest of the school year, but.
Some of the things that we purchase on them, sometimes it's curriculum items, we're gonna blame Ryan.
I might have bought a lot of stuff.
Ryan bought a lot of stuff.
You're kind of expensive.
Well, we have a lot of kids come to summer school.
Well, no, but, it just, it, sometimes you buy a lot of curriculum type things, and that can get to be a forty-dollar bill.
Are we taking a motion?
I will make a motion to increase.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Okay, now.
So do we get perks off the credit cards that we utilize?
No.
My, my question is, why wouldn't we just get a second card, so that with, like, say, a fifteen, or fifteen thousand dollar limit? Because if we've got this many people using them.
Well, we only have, we do have two.
Well, we have yours and mine.
But they're.
But they're tied together.
They're tied together, yup.
So the thirty thousand dollars is on those two combined.
Right. So, and I, I'm not sure, I'm assuming this is where you're going with it, so like, when the coaches go to state.
Yep.
I pre-authorize the credit cards, so they're not taking a physical credit card with them, they're, they're not allowed to. Um, so they, all the hotels have a credit card authorization form, so I just fill that out with the credit card information, and.
Yeah, social does that, too, I still want that thing.
So that's what it's on, so, so that it all ends up being the same credit card, so.
Any other questions?
I think it's time.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, I'd suggest we get one that gives us cash back.
Or.
Or.
Credit miles or something.
Well, ours, the one I have, and Chris has one also, you, uh, we just use the cash back option to pay the bill, so you can use it to.
And who do we have, we have it through a bank here in town.
It's through Mid-Minnesota.
Mid-Minns got points through their credit cards.
Credit card, we should check and see, I get her.
Maybe we just have an older.
You should.
Yeah, we should look at the.
You should ask that, because.
We'll get free money.
We're spending that much of money on a credit card, we should see if we got better business cards.
I can certainly ask them.
Something better business-wise, miles or something that we, when we go to things or something.
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
All right, thank you, and that's all the answer budget. All right, thank you, uh, moving on to other, Paul Bunyan education cooperative.
In your packet, um, you have Paul Bunyan, uh, cooperative, cooperative budget packet. You have two different, well, I guess, you have two for you.
Cass County Children's Initiative. Add it up.
Well, I'm gonna give you, let's see, which one did I give you? See, I want to see which one I want.
Uh, the Paul Bunyan Education Cooperative, that wasn't the meeting I was invited to.
No, you're not invited to that one. Um, this one was in your packet. Um, this is just basically the budget that was set for next year. Um, I just, I just, uh, attached it for you, and, um.
What, this was the one that's blown up, or like that, otherwise I don't have one that looks like yours.
No, I don't have one that looks like that either.
Is this in your attachment?
I got it, they look like that.
Yeah, they're bigger, did you blow it up?
Support revenue, current assets, current liability expenses.
And it's for.
Yep, those, yes, the same thing.
These are Cass County ones.
Okay, so not the same.
This one was a, this should've been in your, in your board book, I thought, this came.
We did get something.
Okay, this is in your board book, but ba- basically, if you wanna look it over, I just attached it as a, for you to look over in your, it's FY twenty-twenty-three Paul Bunyan budget. Um, basically, it's, it shows you that, um, the total revenue for Paul Bunyan is at three point three over, just a little over three point three million dollars. Um, is what we spend as a Paul Bunyan budget, and, um, the adjustments, uh, the end current fiscal year is, um, was I gonna share with that, three point three million, and.
It stayed the same.
Yeah, I think it was that, and didn't get, didn't improve, didn't, uh, oh, this is a sheet that I was gonna show you. On the very last page, she gave us what, what the state, the feds kicked in over the last twenty years, and how it fluctuated over the years, and if you look back on, in, in fiscal year two thousand and ten, the percentage change, we got a three percent increase, and I'm just gonna, just so you, just how, how weird it is on the feds. I'm just gonna go from year to year change, three percent increase, one percent increase, one percent decline, zero, six percent decline, three percent increase, zero, two percent increase, one percent increase, zero, zero, two percent increase, a negative six percent, and then it goes to a three, negative three, so overall, in the last twenty years, it's, there's no rhyme or reason to argue a bunch of that.
We were at, say.
Yeah.
Five percent at the beginning, I think we're at one percent.
Yup. So over the last, so over the last twenty years, the federal government has ba- basically stayed status quo. One year they give you a six percent, and the next year they take away a three percent. So.
They take away a three percent, maybe back a one.
I mean, when she handed that out, I was like, that makes no sense, rhyme or reason, that's why it went, gave me that one.
Okay, on camera, I know it, but seriously, does it surprise you with the best?
That's why, that's what I was gonna go over that one. So if you wanna look at that, I attached that one for you.
Yeah. And anything else on the Paul Bunyan Co-op budget?
Um, we, um, the attorneys are still working through, um, the initial joint powers agreement to try to clarify some of that language issues between Brainerd and ours, the piece of it, they haven't had a chance to work through some things yet, uh, so hopefully by fall. So hopefully by fall, they've had a chance to try to work through some of those language issues. The attorney's around vacation. So we're still working through that. They have hired three new director positions. A lot of that's going to come out of their ESER dollars that they received, kind of like what we did. And then after that, portion of that will be tacked on to each school, piece of that that we'll have to figure out into the budget.
Any comment, or comments, questions, or concerns on the Paul Bunyan co-op? And we will move on to your report.
Okay, I've handed out a few pieces to you. This one was also the agenda, Paul Bunyan, and I'm going to share one other piece with that. If you look at our, if you go to page. Three, the child count for each school. I'll show you what Pillagers was. You can see that this is just our resident district. So the people that are in our seats are Pillager students that live in our residency. So over the, since two thousand and seventeen, you see our seventeen percent, fifteen percent, sixteen, sixteen, sixteen. So the number of students that receive special ed students that are Pillager residents has stayed pretty consistent, hasn't gone up much. And you can see what in two, twenty-twenty-one, you see the other schools that are in the Paul Bunyan. You see seventeen percent, twenty-three percent, twenty-four, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-one, sixteen. So there's, that gives you some information from the other schools. These are just the kids that are Pillager residents, okay?
And that's percent of our enrollment?
Yes, that are just Pillager residents, okay?
Well, just special ed.
These are just special ed students that receive services.
So it's a, so it's basically percent of our student body that is getting.
Services, might be speech, might be LD, might be DCD, it's all combined, yep. So now if you turn the page to page four, now these are all students, not just Pillager students, but these include open enrolled students, okay? So this is for the whole hall of Paul Bunyan. So now you see Pillagers from the last child, students in the seats, we are at eighteen percent.
Which isn't a huge jump as everybody.
But it is, right. So when you factor, how many students do you get open enrolled, our student count went up two percent. So the, the fact, when you hear somebody says, you're taking a ton of kids in and you're taking all these students, it's not a lot. So we went from sixteen percent to eighteen percent. So it's not a lot. So there's some information for you. Oh, that, okay, that one I wanted to share with you. Children's Initiative, I gave you a couple handouts. The first one is, the Children's Initiative is a collaborative of, of people from family center in Cass County, Cass County Family Centers, the county, the school systems in Cass County. And we meet a couple times, three, four times every year. And we use, we get dollars from grants, we get dollars from random moments that. Random Moments is a program where social services, social workers, they do a program where they, what are you doing at this moment in time, what are you working with? And they submit the, what they're doing with students. And we get federal, we get dollars for doing activities with these students. And we use those dollars, we, the Children's Initiative uses those dollars to provide services for students. We get some dollars from Children's Initiative, which we help supplant our social worker in the elementary. Is what we use those dollars for. We don't, not all of it, but I think, what, Missy, do you remember? Thirty, thirty grand is what we get from Children's Initiative. I sit, I'm the chair of that committee. And I gave you the, the first one I'm going to give you is the budget that we get from that. It's the assets and the revenues. One of the things is, we have been losing dollars, I guess you could say, over the last five years, we're not getting as many dollars as we used to get. We didn't do too bad last year. We, we actually, you know, we set a budget of about two hundred and, I think the budget was two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars last year, two-seventy-three, I think it was, and we actually. I think we only lost like four or five thousand dollars, so we didn't do too bad. We've been losing about twenty grand a year. We have about, Missy, do you remember four, three, four hundred thousand dollars in the bank?
We have probably close to four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand. But we've been averaging about twenty thousand dollars a year in the hole. The board has said, you know what, we're going to provide services for kids until we can't, or we may have to maybe cut back what we're giving family centers and schools. So at this point, we're going to continue setting our budget where we're at for the next few years until we maybe either increase revenue. If we continue to lose money at the rate that we're losing, then we may have to maybe not give back to the family centers as much as we do and/or schools. But at this point, you know, we're, we're going to stay where we're at. But the family centers use it to provide home, home, home visits. So that's what they do a lot with their money. But it's a, it's a very, it's a, it's a very great board. It's a, it's a cool, a collaborative group of people with the county, Neil sits on it from the county commissioners, all the family centers. And we get together every so often to talk about what are the things at the schools and the family centers? What are some of the issues that we're having? How can we help support kids? And I just provided this for you, that you can see what the budget we have and what we do with those dollars. And I wanted to share with you that, you know, we have been losing revenue the last three or four years, but we do get some dollars from that program to help supplant the social worker in the, in the elementary program. So, but at this point, we're going to stay status quo and see what happens the next three, four years. I have a meeting tomorrow with Lakewood and Twin City Orthopedics to see a possible partnership that we can have with those people. Excited about the meeting with their people and to see some partnerships that we could have with their, their, their people and to see how we can help. Maybe do some things that can benefit all of us together. So I'll report to you guys on how that goes in July. I'd like to congratulate Ellie Trigasev and Andy Grell. They did compete with the team at the state sporting place, they got third as a team. Ellie got top female and Andy got top male and all around.
Sporting place or trap?
Sporting place. Trap, they didn't do as well, sporting place they did a lot better. And it was only their second time in sporting place. And then I also would like to congratulate Jessica Kimmon for fifth place in the Hundred Turtles. Congratulations her. And the last thing I have is. The sign out front, I'm working with the city. They were in the process of redoing their sign, so hopefully we can get something done with the electronic billboard out in the front of, by the. This is a drawing of what we're trying to get accomplished, using some of our ESER dollars for message board.
In Lance Park.
In Lance Park.
I'll, I, I think it looks beautiful, and I'm glad we're doing something. I'll be honest, there, it, it worries me. That corner's dangerous and having people wondering what's being said on it. And looking at this instead of paying attention to that corner.
Well, there is a, there is a plan that there is going to be a roundabout there. So that is in the works. What's that?
There is going to be.
There is a roundabout, now they don't have a year for that, but that is in the Department of Transportation.
I feel like we heard about that a lot.
Yeah.
They don't have any.
Making two ten of four lanes been on the schedule for twenty years, so. Good luck.
But the city is in.
I mean, I li, I like the look of it, and I think it's great, that worries me. To know that one of our students is trying to read something.
It looks big, that little guy.
Like six foot by.
Pretty good size, yeah.
I like it.
If they're going to put in a roundabout, just make sure the size is located.
Yeah, make sure you don't have to move it. Rotating.
They might want to mention.
Well, that's all I got.
Is that it, everything? Any personal board reports? Any questions, comments, or concerns to bring? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I forgot one thing, I'm not cheap.
And done. Camera turned off? Not yet. Say that like that, it's almost like you have something to say you don't want to.
Nope. I just didn't want anyone else to say anything.